Good evening and welcome to the Old Colony Regional Vocational Central School Committee Meeting of Wednesday, February 17th, 2021. In attendance this evening, we have the following individuals from the town of Apushnit, Maurice St. Amon, and Justin Broder from the town of Carver, Dawn Williams from the town of Lakeville, Gary Mintz-Teal, Don Foster, Robert Marshall from the town of Rochester, Shirley Burke, David Hughes, and from the town of Matapoisette, Nancy Souza, and Richard Gamache. Also in attendance with us this evening, we have Mrs. Sarah Griffith, our business manager, Jolene Costa, Secretary to the School Committee and Assistant to the Superintendent Director, Deb LeBeck, school nurse, Mike Parker, Principal Katie Tuchanardi, Academic Coordinator Chris LaFay, Special Services Director Kyle O'Neil, Director of Technology, and Matt Trahan, Director of Athletics. I'm Aaron Polansky, Superintendent Director. We are also welcoming Ms. Sharon Cruz and Ms. Evelyn Boulay to the meeting. At this point in time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our School Committee Chairperson, Julie Burke.
Thanks, Aaron. I would ask those in attendance here if they would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to justice for all.
Last night, I had you the quote that was on the maquis outside the building. Mike Parker seems to have a gift for picking out what I think is just wonderful quotes. I go by the maquis almost every day, and I can always catch when it changes. And then I spend several, actually weeks, thinking about it when I go by it because I'm always looking at it. So tonight, just for a moment of reflection, I'm going to read to you the quote that is on the maquis outside our building. "Change the way you look at things, and what you look at change." And it's attributed to Dyer. I would ask you to take from that whatever message you feel is appropriate. I just think for the times that we're in, it can be a profound comment. And I thank Mike for the thoughtfulness that he puts into selecting a quote, and I can't wait to see what much brings. So with that, let's start the meeting. Do we have any? I know we have no one here of a participation. As far as we can tell, we do not have any. So before we start the meeting tonight, I'd like to take a moment to welcome the extraordinary Secretary to the School Committee. Jolene is amongst us, yes. Matt, you can applaud because we can all applaud. It's so nice to see Jolene smiling. Look what she brings to us, her smiling face. Welcome back, Jolene. And on behalf of the School Committee, I would also like to extend our thanks to yet another extraordinary person, Sarah Griffith, who has acted. Did she say no already? But she has acted, and Jolene said, to help get our minutes done. We are blessed at Old Colony to have a team who steps up for each other and steps in for each other. So on behalf of the School Committee, thank you, Sarah.
And Chairman, I think on behalf of Dawn Foster and myself, we would like to get Jolene back here for the pastries, too.
Well, unless she's cooking them.
I thought we liked the pastries.
The cookies and the brownies.
Oh, well, Jolene, I guess you can't come back until you have goodies with you.
Okay.
And that's a pretty cute lesson from David.
We'd love to see you anyway. We'd love to see you anyway.
Okay. You should have, everybody should have received under a separate cover the minutes for the December 16th meeting. So if you have that, I am going to ask that we have a motion to approve the, I'm going to waive the reading of the items and ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move it. I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by David Hughes and a second by Dawn Foster to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? I do not hear any. You have the operating statement, which was provided in our package. Are there any questions for Sarah? Hearing none, we'll move on. The warrants are available for review. I do not believe there is any old business unless someone has something they need to bring up. Hearing none, but move on to new business. There is a recommended action to accept the donation of one precision ground knee 12-inch by 1 inch by 15 and 1/2, one precision ground knee 3 inch by 4 inches by 4 inch, one precision ground knee 3 and 1/2 inch by 4 inch by 4 and 1/2 inch from Martin Urban and Dave Jewett of F. H. Peterson Machine Corp. to the Machine and Tool Technology Department, valued at $200.
Move the recommended action.
Second.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Dawn Foster. David Hughes has seconded it. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained?
I don't know how you could oppose a free gift.
No, me neither.
No idea.
Good gift.
Okay. There are no items unanticipated 48 hours in advance. So I am going to move through the subcommittee. The negotiating, I have assumed the chair of the negotiating subcommittee with the resignation of John. We met last week. It is still an ongoing process. We hope to bring it to a successful end shortly, but we will keep everybody in the loop as we move it along. Justin, IT?
So we met last week, I think, and the discussion was just around the document that we had been working on. That document has been wrapped and it's been presented to the Policy Subcommittee, of which I understand there's some feedback and some potential changes. One of the other, the other items that we need to do, which Mr. Polansky is in the process of doing, is determining a filing code from MASC. Once we have that, we can finalize that document, pass it back to Policy, and then hopefully Policy can then vote on that document, and then we can bring it in front of the district. Kyle gave us an update as well. Seems like everything's going fairly well from an IT perspective. He had mentioned some possible future purchases and getting some grants, but other than that, everything seems to be going well.
Any questions for Justin? Hearing none. Policy Subcommittee, do you want to do that, Aaron?
Sure. Just to piggyback on what Mr. Broder just reported out on, our filing code arrived today. So we will be able to add that to the policy that is under review, and we'll forward that policy first in draft form to the Policy Subcommittee with the updates, and then to the full committee probably at our March meeting for a vote. The other piece is recommended action, which we would ask the committee to vote on. It is a vote to approve the updated homeless policy, JFABD, as recommended by the Policy Subcommittee, so we're just looking for a motion.
Move the recommended action.
So there was a motion made by Mr. Foster and seconded by Mr. Hughes. If we could just put the vote to the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? Thank you. The vote passes, and that is helpful. We appreciate that. That will come in handy with our tiered focus monitoring process.
Okay. Excuse me, but to the chair, I just want to say, Justin, I love your hoodie.
You've left Justin speechless, Evelyn. Nancy Souza, future planning.
Yes, good evening. I'm just going to take a few minutes because a lot went on at the meeting. We had a meeting on January 27th, and we did a recap of what we had discussed because the previous meeting was almost a year ago. We talked about the status of the current facility. We reviewed the Statement of Interest, the SOI, from other schools. And then at that meeting, almost a year ago, we decided to submit an SOI, and that was done in April of 2020. We had a meeting on January 27th. As we, as Aaron had mentioned in the previous School Committee meeting, that we had advanced in the process from 71 applicants to 30. Aaron and some others met with the MSBA, the Mass School Building Authority, on January 19th to answer questions and provide any additional information. Hopefully sometime in April, we'll find out if they will be conducting a senior, senior study site visit to examine the physical condition of the school as well as the programmatic issues that affect the delivery of the educational programs. Want everybody to keep in mind that this is part of the diligence phase, and it's in no way an approval of the, of the project. Other things discussed at the meeting were an overview of enrollment and application trends. We brainstormed new programs, and should reach out to gather information from some of our stakeholders, our students, and our parents, and also into the labor market to support these decisions. If invited, we would go into the eligibility process, and we talked about our district agreement and how we would incur debt according to mass general law. I think we decided that we'd send a letter, Aaron would send a letter, to member towns to keep them informed, also a survey to see what our stakeholders and those parent students again would like to see for vocational and academic programs. And I think at the end of the discussion, I think it was apparent that it's important to note that the MSBA will make the recommendation whether to renovate or build a new school, and that, a lot of that will be based on cost. And if there are no questions, that completes my portion.
Are there any questions for Nancy? Hearing none. We move on to the Budget Subcommittee. Mo?
Okay, I'm going to give this a shot because we had a meeting last month, it was the 22nd, I believe, and had quite a bit of information from Sarah and Aaron and Mike. The assessments of the towns were quite high, and I guess we had some feedback that any way we could lower them. In the meantime, I guess the governor's budget came out, and apparently according to what Sarah told, the town pupil enrollments have gone down. So it actually affected our budget, Chapter 70 money. It actually went down versus going up. And, but they came up as a grant that we're applying for or have applied for, which will help alleviate some of the hardships on the towns. I want to ask Sarah if she could explain it, please, because she did most of this work for Aaron, and what this involves, please.
Sure. So the state released from the federal government, the ESSER2 grant. School districts, regional school districts have the option to use up to 75% of this grant to offset minimum local contribution for our member towns. So when the Budget Subcommittee met and took a look at the increases to the total assessment, they decided to move forward with a presentation to our member towns where we use these funds to offset the increase to minimum local contribution. And we are scheduled to meet tomorrow night.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's the next thing, this, we have a meeting tomorrow night if you want to join in, 6 o'clock. Thank you.
Any questions for Mo or Aaron or Sarah regarding the budget? Bob?
Sorry, I'm muted. Could we have, I think I'm clear on it, but I'm not sure everybody else on the committee would be privy to it. The reason why even though, yeah, member town student enrollment dropped, our, and ours increased, why we had a, such an increase in assessment. Sarah had, did a good job explaining that to us the last time we met.
Sure. So when the Chapter 70 numbers were released, Aaron and I met and we spoke with individuals in the DESI Finance Department to get further explanation as to why the minimum local contribution for our member towns increased so significantly, and Old Colony didn't receive any additional foundation, Chapter 70, for the additional students added to our foundation enrollment. And the explanation we were given was this. Because of the pandemic, our member towns enrollment in their local schools, so their elementary schools and middle schools, decreased significantly. The state's valuation of our member town ability to pay therefore left funds for the member towns to fund Old Colony's shift in enrollment with. So for this school year, the state has decided that our member towns have an ability to fund minimum local contribution here at Old Colony for the foundation enrollment. It is significant, a significant increase. It is $778,000 increase in minimum local contribution. That is the reason behind it. There was a lot, you know, Aaron and I asked a lot of questions, and we wanted to know what will happen next year. And we were told by the Department of Education that there is no way for them to tell us now what will happen next year until they see whether or not the school-aged children in our member towns attend the local public school again, versus now where they've left the local public school system and they've gone to either private schools or a Catholic school. So as of right now, the Budget Subcommittee has decided to approach this year's budget, doing the best that we can to keep the assessment increase as close to minimum local contribution increase as possible. Of course, with the big question mark in regards to what will happen next year, whether the students in our member towns will go back into the public school system or not. If they go back into the public school system, and those funds are decided by the state of Massachusetts that the town will need those funds for their local public school system, we may see a shift in our Chapter 70 funding, but there's no way for them to give us that information yet. Bob, was that what you wanted me to go into, what you call on?
Yep, that was it. And if anybody understands that, you're a better man or person than I am.
Are there any other questions?
Julie?
Yes, there.
How many of the towns are sending or having people on the Zoom meeting tomorrow night?
So far, we have representation from all of our towns, we believe. So we should be in relatively good shape. I do have a call into Mike Lorenko. He was busy with somebody yesterday when I had called, so I'm waiting to hear back from him. We have someone from every town.
I do know, Aaron, I think Rich mentioned to you, he can only stay for a certain amount of time. He's got another meeting to go to after that, I think at 7:00, so.
Yeah, we're happy to catch anybody up to speed, too, with follow-ups as necessary, like we always do. So if for some reason someone's not available, we can always touch base with you.
And just to comment, the amount of work, I know apparently till February, it must be a month of affirmation or something, because the amount of work that Sarah and Aaron put into this since the release of the governor's budget is extraordinary. The budget, the governor's budget, when it was released and we saw at first what happened to Chapter 70, the, our expectations, everything changed for us. And in quite frankly, very short order, they tried to make rhyme a reason. They reached out to legislators, they reached out to DESI, they reached out to everybody they could to try to understand this, try to quite frankly, change what we had already thought was going to be a budget proposal to make it that much more palatable to the towns. I said it at the Budget Subcommittee, I would say it tonight, and I will say it again tomorrow if the need arises. They should be commended for the amount of work they did and the effort that they put into the budget that we will present tomorrow to the towns. With that said, Isabel unfortunately could not join us, so there is no report from our student advisor. We will move on to the reports from the administration. Mr. Polansky?
Enclosed in the packet was an initial iteration of my mid-cycle performance goals. I did send a follow-up to that packet with updates, as while they're listed specific to my goals, much of what you'll see is shared by the administrative team. So the work that is done is certainly a collective representation of everybody's efforts. So I'd like to thank first and foremost, the administrative team and the staff for their contributions to the completion thus far of the goals that have been outlined. I don't know what the desire of the committee is, if they'd like me to actually talk through the document, or if you'd like to just ask some questions if you've had the opportunity to see the document through the chair, I'll ask that question.
Are there any questions for Aaron?
I don't have any questions. I've, I think I'm familiar enough with the document now that we've been using it for a little while, and I'm pleased with the, what I've seen.
Nancy, I saw you hand up.
I was basically going to say the same thing. I don't have a question, but I just want to comment, I want to thank Aaron for putting the, the time and effort into giving some specifics, measurable items there so that we could look at to evaluate during this mid-cycle. So Aaron, that was a lot of work, and I appreciate that, and, and anybody that contributed to that as well. Thank you.
Indeed.
And I would be remiss if I did not thank Nancy as the Subcommittee Chair for Evaluation. I did reach out to Nancy with the document before I shared it with the full committee in its second draft, just to ask her insights and feedback, and she provided us with some really valuable feedback. So Nancy, thank you for taking the time to look at the document and to provide additional feedback that resulted in the follow-up. Your thoroughness and your very transparent feedback is always appreciated.
The ninth grade placement data, Aaron, do you want to address it?
Sure. Mrs. Patello puts together information on an annual basis that gives you an idea as to the ninth grade interest level prior to the exploratory, after the exploratory, and then it shows you a breakdown of placements, what number in the enrollment each shop closed out at. And then it also shows you the gender distribution by male, female, and non-binary if it exists within the class. Also, plans, IEPs, and 504s are outlined. It's a very thorough statistical document. I take no credit whatsoever for the completion of this. The credit certainly goes to Mrs. Patello, who does a stellar job of keeping track each year of our statistics as they pertain to selection, pre, post, exploratory. So I'd like to thank her for her efforts.
Aaron, one question. I'm curious, do the teachers look at the pre and posts and try to figure out why kids, like CAD, you know, the pre was 14, the post was 6 for first choice? And I wonder how many instructors use this as a tool to figure out whether their message is being received, not being received?
I think that our instructors are very reflective, and this tool really allows for some considerable reflection. You also see friendly competition. So that, you know, I'll state that very candidly, that it becomes a little bit fun when you look at these statistics and you say, jeez, look how many kids changed their mind. They perceived something to be one way, they experienced the exploratory, and perhaps they experience a shift in what they thought was an exemplar within a certain area, and change their perceptions and sometimes their interests. So I think it's, the document is very telling for a lot of people, and I think it also allows us to pause and reflect. I would absolutely say that every, every member of the instructional staff within the vocational areas looks at this with, with at least a couple sets of eyes.
Interesting. Are there any questions for Aaron? Okay. In, in keeping in the theme of the night about extraordinary people, Matt looks like he's a little pained right now, so I'm kind of hoping he's going to put a smile on that face. And between him and Aaron, we'll talk about athletics fall 2 season.
Mr. Trahan, do you mind if I open? Is that okay? I want to start by thanking Mr. Trahan for an incredible amount of work that has gone into not just contemplating when the right time to run an athletic program may be, but also his ability to shift and focus on some other things while simultaneously contemplating this. Because Matt is much more than just a director of athletics. He's a huge personality behind the success of our admissions program on the front lines in coordination with Katie Tuchanardi and Beth Patello, Chris LaFay, does an incredible amount of work on the backend of the admissions and also the interviewing process with our guidance team. I'd like to thank them. But what we did, and if I may share my screen for just a moment, is we started with conversations about when is the right time? And my answer is going to be, I don't know when the right time is. When you're in the midst of a pandemic, what's good for one is not good for all. And so I think it's very important that we state that, because there are never perfect answers while we're living through what we're living through. What we did was we sent a survey out to every superintendent in the state of Massachusetts, and we received seven, I'm sorry, 91 responses. We did it that way because we wanted an unbiased perspective to share with the School Committee. We can tell you what we think, we can tell you what we'd like to do, but we want but we wanted you to see statistics as they've run through the state from people who are in similar seats. Some superintendents completed the surveys, some passed them on to their administrative teams to complete. Our first question was, how many people ran the traditional fall season? Seventy-four point seven percent ran the traditional fall season. The second question was, did your district participate in some level of winter sports during the recent winter season? And 80.2% participated in the winter season, and that's of 91 responses. The next question was, if you answered yes to participation during previous seasons, did you see significant transmission of positive cases amongst your students, your student athletes? We are defining significant as cases that resulted in the need to close school or a portion of your school. Seventy point three percent said no, 16.5 said they didn't run the program in fall or winter, so the question did not apply. I don't see the number of the percentage, but it said, yes, we had to close school or a cohort of school. And the other is, yes, we closed school, I'm sorry, the blue was, yes, we closed school once. The red was, yes, we closed school more than once. Do you plan to participate in interscholastic athletics during the upcoming fall two MIAA season? Eighty-three point five percent told us they did plan to, 9.9% were undecided. And as you can see, a small faction, I believe it was six schools, said that they are not participating, six of the 91. So that survey went out, and there were also comments that were shared with our school committee. With that being said, one of the things that I wanted to share is that in the fall of this year and in the winter of this year, and again, this is, we'll revisit this, this is a testament to Mr. Trehan, who is also our basketball coach. We made a decision that we were not going to run athletics. We made that decision because we still wanted to see the data that we just shared with you. We wanted to see how other schools were doing as they dipped their toes in the water. And they've tested the waters for us. The feedback we've received is that there's been relative success with regard to their operations. There has absolutely been interruption when there have been positive cases. We expect that if we were to have positive cases, we would experience similar interruption. I think it's important not to paint the picture of perfection around this. That's not what it is. When we've had cases in school, we've also had the closing of a cohort or the closing of the school. So I don't want to paint an unrealistic picture of what we're looking at. I think it's very important to hang a sign on the issue. But when we looked at social media in most recent weeks, I share this with you because these are some of our local teams. These are students participating in athletics with their masks on. I think I can speak from my own experiences personally, as a former high school and college athlete. If it were not for athletics, I don't know where I'd be today. This is a huge piece of the identity for many of our students. And I think that other people, as I've said, have tested the water. I feel very comfortable. We met with our nursing staff. I thank Mrs. Levesque for being with us this evening. I told her she did not have to be here. She insisted. She said she wanted to be here, so thank you for taking the time. But I feel it's time to let the kids swim. The water's been tested. We know what the risks are. This is not a mandate. It's simply an option that parents will have a choice around, and that's an important piece of this puzzle. At no point will any student or family member be pressured by a member of the coaching staff or athletic department. But to offer the option is to expand a window of wellness for our students that I think is much needed. Because there's a delicate balance between the physical well-being and the mental health of our students. As we've said on a multitude of occasions, I'm not sure there's a right and wrong answer. I just know that we're in the midst of a paradox, and we're doing our best to serve the communities and the students and their families in the safest manner possible. So I offer that. I'm sorry to talk for such a lengthy period of time, Mr. Trehan. I don't want this to feel like a two-ton weight that you're carrying. We had a collective meeting. We've had conversations as an administrative team, as a school, with members of, certainly Mrs. Burke as the school committee chairperson, with members of our school committee who have called with additional questions, which were welcomed, warranted, and appreciated. And I would just ask for the support of the school committee as we move forward. Matt, if you'd like to add anything, please feel free to.
Aaron, thank you for the kind words first and foremost. And Madam Chair, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you, members of the school committee and our administrative team for considering the possibility of a fall two season. As I mentioned previously with some, my concern is the student athletes' mental, you know, mental health, emotional health, and overall well-being. Granting a fall two season offers parents and families a choice whether or not to play or to play. I'm certain, I am totally certain that myself, the coaches, will do everything in our power to follow the guidelines and modifications that the MIAA has put forward. I truly appreciate your consideration, and I thank you for your time and opportunity tonight. I do promise to be a lot less emotional than I was the last time we spoke about sports.
Is there any questions for either Matt or Aaron? Bob?
Yeah, I'll try to be short, but you know I can't. I can argue both sides of this, this point. I've shared with Aaron and Matt and Shirley a number of my concerns. I'm reading and seeing research that says the variants are coming. They're more than likely worse than what we've seen. Dr. Osterholm from the University of Minnesota Disease Center of Infectious Research says the next 14 weeks are likely to be worse if the variants surge. COVID has apparently tripled in the UK from just before Christmas to now with the variants causing of it. Some could argue that instead, and some have argued, that instead of dropping the mitigations, we should be increasing them, double masking, et cetera. And if we should be increasing them, how can we justify putting our kids in a more exposed position? Multi-system inflammation syndrome is apparently surging. We don't have a vaccine for those under 16. Specifically with respect to football, when you've got kids lining up that close as you start a play, you know, obviously, that's, that's not a three-foot distance. Blocking and holding blocks for a long period of time, safe distancing and masking issues can occur. I personally think volleyball probably would be okay, except when two people come to the net. I think golf and cross-country would probably be okay because you can distance, in my opinion. I worry about cheering if they do complicated and close-contact cheers. All sorts of arguments that you can offer. In my speaking to Matt today and to Aaron, there were a couple of things that, I was going to vote against this tonight, but a couple of things have kind of helped me to lean in the other direction, and Matt and Aaron have helped me to do that. First of all, Aaron pointed out that this, in the end, is the decision of the parents. They are making the decision about whether their child can participate. And something that I was looking for, that Matt told me today, there is going to be a waiver that's going to be sent out. And that gives me great comfort, comfort just from a logistical point of view, this being the kind of litigious society that it is. So I'll stop there. I can argue it both ways. I've gone back and forth for days over this, lots of reasons for me to vote against it, some good reasons to vote for it, and that's where I am going to be voting. But thank you very much.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Nancy?
I too have spent a lot of time thinking about this, and when I look at that, those statistics, and I read through the whole packet that was sent out, I think our parents, our student athletes, have been more than patient, waiting to begin athletics again. When I look at those statistics, sometimes I wonder, I wish that I had that earlier. When you talk about 75%, Aaron, am I correct, that participated in a fall sport? Even more, 80-some percent in a winter sport? I follow athletics, you know, through the paper, all other social media sources, and many of our local schools have participated throughout the winter. So I'm in favor of it. I just have a couple of comments. You know, the protocols and the guidelines, you know, for coaches, their responsibility. I think that's a lot of responsibility on a, maybe one or two people. And I know, Matt, you'll be heavily involved, but I had mentioned to Aaron that I would hope that we could give some flexibility, whether it be monetary or whatever, to give these coaches in the athletic department some assistance. When you're talking about sanitizing before, during, after, sign-ins, there were, you know, all kinds of guidelines and protocol that had to be followed, and to put that on one or two people, something's going to slip through the crack. So I would hope that we could get some support for the athletic department. Like I said, if you've read the paper, many of our local teams, towns that we support have been participating all winter long in athletics. And yes, they might have had to miss a game or two or shut down at various points. But for the most part, you know, I watched my own town, the girls' basketball just completed a 10-0 season. So they played 10 games and, and, you know, they were, they were successful. On the other side, and I've already mentioned this to Aaron, that in order to be equitable, fair, I also think that we need to look at the other extracurricular activities that are at the school. We're talking about athletics, but what about our drama club and any other club at the school? I would like to make a recommendation that the school, that the administration look into those activities and if they can be performed safely so that we're fair and equitable to others' students in the school. I know, like theater and music, and I follow the MASC information that's put out, and you know, that this, I think they're still participating in singing outside at this point. And they're looking to come in as well. So those are, those are my comments, but I am in support of the athletics, but I'd also like to see if we could get the other organizations to do so, to participate safely as well. Thank you.
I think that's a good idea. I agree with the answer.
Madam Chair, before you move into, can I just one thing, David? Matt, quick question for you. If we participate in fall two, will it be automatic that we will participate in the spring season? Or will that be another reconsideration?
That's a great question. I would imagine that we would ask for reconsideration and base it on how things went in the fall two season.
Before, I'd like David to speak. I too want to make a comment, a quick one, that when I received all the information that Matt had sent out, as is my nature, I sent a very long list of questions to Matt. Matt was thoughtful in his responses, and I wanted to thank him for that. He understood that this is a difficult decision for me, but as a grandparent of a 14-year-old who is playing sports as we, well, maybe not as we speak, but he has continued to play soccer, and he has done it carefully. I don't know how I could deprive students here of something that is just ongoing at home. But I respect Matt, I respect the time he gives to the student athletes, to the student body as a whole here. And just again, want to thank him. David, I think you were going to?
I just want to thank Matt and also Nancy for their insight. I think that both sports and drama or whatever other programs we have in school makes a well-rounded student. I believe students need this extra. It's something that they've been missing, and I really do not want it to continue. I want to see them participate as much as possible. So I thank you, Matt, for your job that you're doing. Well done. I support you 100%. And Nancy, thank you for bringing up the issue of the drama club and other clubs here in school, because I think that's important also.
Thank you. Bob?
Nancy, I agree 100%. As always, you bring up great points. I neglected to thank Shirley for holding my hand through a discussion last night as well, so thank you very much.
No problem. Okay, I'm going to fall away with this. Oh, I'm sorry, Sharon, I thought you were rubbing your hands. Don't care. I apologize.
No, that's okay. Just a quick comment to Bob. I had similar thoughts about how can we do this? And Nancy, yes, obviously, thinking of all the other things that does support student well-being. I just had a question about the waiver. I mean, and how can we, with what we already know in the news, what we know about the various, the different variants, how can we hold fast to a waiver? Even if families do say, yeah, I do want my child to participate, how does that truly protect us?
I think there's, if I can speak to this real quick, Sharon, that's a great point you make. A waiver, no matter when someone signs a waiver, is only a deterrent. And lawyers will always tell you that. A waiver is only a deterrent. We have an obligation to conduct business in accordance with the outlined protocols that have been set by the state. And parents, while they have the choice for their student to participate or not to participate, if something were not to go right, they have a choice also as to how they proceed. So a waiver in legal courses that I've taken has always been described merely as a deterrent. But it's informative. It very clearly proclaims, I understand that this is a choice, not a mandate, so to speak, and that I'm doing this of my own volition, if that's helpful. But you make a very valid point, Sharon. There's so many unknowns, right? That for any of us to say that we have a thorough understanding of what COVID really brings to the table would be so premature, because we won't know for 10 years what the real implications are until longitudinal studies are done with people who have experienced it. So I think you make a very valid point.
And the other piece is too, if those students will participate, it is really challenging to keep students. All the pictures that were shown, no one was three feet away from each other. And so working in a school myself, it's really challenging. Everyone wants to be next to each other. So those safety guards of imagining that you can actually, you know, slow the spread, prevent the spread based on keeping a three-foot distance, sports is not a three-foot distance. It's usually very contact-like. I like how Bob talked about specific sports themselves, golf that you can play or, you know, cross-country where you're actually running at a separate distance, but you are running in the wake of someone else's runs unless you're masked, then that air comes behind you. So those are all things that we still have to consider, many variants out there. Not, not only just the student's safety, but students are not often in bubbles where if you look at some of the professional sports that they were able to keep going, people committed to just staying and playing in one group. I know that that's not going to be a likely story. So with the school, and you commented before, the school did have to close several times throughout the year already. So had winter sports been happening, I imagine that that would have been quite the same effect from players to the school. So I just still have a lot of, not full comfort with the sports this winter, or fall two, as they call it.
I don't think I have full company either, Sharon.
I have a question, if you can hear me. I'm not sure you even can at this stage. Can you hear me?
Gary.
Can you hear me? Gary.
Has there been any feedback as to the number of students that have come down with the virus that have been involved in these programs?
The feedback we got from the sending, from the school, the 91 schools that responded was really limited exposure. And the comments were shared with the full committee in an Excel spreadsheet. And so that certainly shaped some of our thought processes. It wasn't that they were without the need for the occasional shutdown. I think 70-something percent, I could go back to the slide. But I believe it was, I have a printout here because it might, I may have already shut down the slide. Give you one second, Gary. When we asked the question, the question was phrased, if you answered yes to participation during previous seasons, did you see significant transmission of positive cases amongst your student athletes? We are defining significant as cases that resulted in the need to close school or a portion of your school. Of the 91 schools, 70.3% reported no, which was encouraging. 16.5% reported that they didn't even run a program. And so that's 86.5, 86.8% aggregate. So the remaining 13.2% did it in some level. And it looked like it was split right down the middle. So probably five to six schools either had to close a cohort once or more than once. If that's helpful. That's the information I have from a data-specific source, Gary. But nothing further than that in terms of what we asked.
No, I understand. I was involved in sports in high school and loved every minute of it. So I understand the importance of it. I also have a grandson who's in a school that has had some issues, I understand. So it's incumbent upon me, I think, to at least try to understand the risk, if you can, from a percentage perspective. It sounds like there's about a 15% chance, which is really small compared to the number of people that will be participating. So I guess from my perspective, I would tend to go along with doing it, even though I'm hesitant about it.
I think also what we tried to look at is for those students who have contracted it, what has that consisted of? And we talked with our nurses about the decision because they're in more close contact with families. I'm sure they don't get the specifics for every student who experiences it. But I know that our nurses have had conversations with families around when they can come back. And that's based on how the symptoms present themselves. So as recently as yesterday, Don Foster and I sat with a group who, of the group in its entirety, probably half of the group had experienced COVID. And their experiences were very different from one another. And so again, we are put in this place where we know a decision is not necessarily an easy decision because everyone's experiences have been so different. But given the nature of what we've seen and the fact that other folks have had the opportunity to swim before we do. And I use that analogy because testing the water is exactly what we had hoped would happen. We've seen the relative, I'll call it success, that they've had. And we feel confident supporting our students by offering the opportunity.
How often have the students tested?
The students are only, there is no mandate for student testing. If a student is symptomatic, they can either quarantine. And in order to return sooner than the end date of the quarantine, a student can be tested, if that makes sense. But unlike some of the universities where testing takes place with a level of frequency, there is no, there is no routine student testing that takes place.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Nancy?
I would just, one last question for me anyway is, what are the, what are some of the comments? Or what is the feeling of the parents of these student athletes? What are they telling you to try and get sports going? Or, you know, what is their sentiment?
I can speak to the parents who called when they, there was rumor that we'd be talking about this. I had four or five parents call and say, could they speak? Or did we feel there was a need for them to speak? And I said, I did not feel as though they had to, but if they would like to speak, they were certainly welcome to. But we've had very strong advocates for the reintroduction of sports. I think Matt could probably speak further to that. But there's been, there have been a lot of parents advocating for the return. I know a lot of our students are struggling without it.
Correct. So.
I assume that.
Yeah, so I would, I would say if I was going to equate it, I feel like a walking billboard as we've approached this meeting. You know, questions from student athletes, they are hell-bent on, you know, having something. They, you know, they're hopeful and really, even though it's an abbreviated season, they just want to be active and with their teammates and coaches again. Some of the parents that I've spoken with are in full support. But I mean, again, I don't speak with every parent. But everything is, in my opinion, is coming back positive and hopeful.
I think it goes back to what I said before was, I just think that the athletic department needs some support because kids want to be with their friends, their teammates. And it's going to be different. In order to be successful, it's going to be difficult to keep them apart. But, you know, we've got good kids there and they know that if, if they don't follow the rules, then the consequences could be that they, you know, could end a season very quickly. So I really hope, you know, that everyone adheres to the rules and the support is given to coaches, managers, whoever's there, to yourself, Matt. And, you know, because, because I, I'd like to see it. I've watched it all winter long and it was heartbreaking, to tell you the truth.
It was, it was for me too. I mean, you know, to sit here and say, you know, what we did about the winter season and then see everybody else participate. I will say this, though, I'm very fortunate to have strong colleagues. You referenced, Nancy, the South Coast Conference, who have been participating all winter and fully intend on participating in the fall two season. You know, I'm in a cohort, I'm in a pod with them and we met as recently as this past week. And again, like Aaron had stated, it's great that some of them have tested the waters because they can point to instances where we need to, you know, make sure that we protect ourselves and the students. So it's been very helpful.
Right, because we're talking about, you know, schools that are sending students to Old Colony. We're not talking about the other side of the state. We're talking right here in southeastern Mass. So again, I was, I was heartbroken to say the least.
The other thing that I'll say, Nancy, if I may, through the chair, is that in fairness to the folks who may have concerns, they just may not have voiced them. And so we have scheduled another coffee talk for March 3rd in the spirit of transparency and open dialogue so that if folks do have concerns, insights, ideas, we can continue to allow for an open forum type of conversation. Because there are no right or wrong answers right now, and we have to keep that in mind. It's a very delicate situation. Everyone will experience it differently. And we're looking to provide an opportunity where people will have a choice. Back in August, when we were fine-tuning our 40-plus-page reentry proposal, I called Shirley one night and I said to her, I cannot sleep. And she said, why is that? And I said, because there's not an option and school is required. And she said, well, then I think you just answered your question. I said, I'd really like to make sure that people have the option to be fully remote should they choose to do so. And we offered that option and I could sleep at night following that. And Bob and I had that same conversation today around choice. One of the things that allows me to take a deep breath is this is something that parents have choices about. If their student chooses to participate, they can do so. Believe it or not, the three-foot requirement does not stand in sports. It does not stand on buses. So we're in total confusion when we look at some state parameters that are good for sports and buses, but not in classrooms. We jokingly said back in the fall, why don't we buy every student a soccer ball and bring them back to school full-time? When they ask why they're so close in the classroom, we can say they're playing soccer while they learn in the classroom. I say that jokingly. But I tell you that the hypocrisy at times puts us in places where we need to tread delicately. When we were at the beginning of this process, we did just that. And I'll just continue to reiterate. Now that we've seen the success that people have, we feel better educated. We don't have all the answers as Sharon Cruz has said, but we're ready to let the kids give it a try. So we thank you for everybody, we thank everybody for their contribution, their dialogue and their insight. I know Mr. Marshall had a question.
Yes, Bob?
I don't want to put Mrs. Lebec on the spot, but does, do you have anything that you think would shed some light on this and help us out? And the second question is, have we heard from any parents or kids who don't want this to go forward?
So the first, I'll address your second question, which is, we have not heard, I have not heard from any parents who did not want it to go forward.
Thank you.
Your other question was for Mrs. Lebec. I'll defer.
So it's a very difficult situation for most people and you guys making a decision. I did speak to Matt and Aaron and I did tell them that I do support the athletics going forward because of the fact that I trust Matt and I know he's going to follow all procedures, all policies. But that being said, as Nancy mentioned, it's going to take an army and it's going to take many people to be sure that we adhere to all those guidelines. I did tell Matt and my colleague Lindsay, we've offered our support and our presence for the beginning of the rollout. Now, I do express my concern with some parents mentioning if we are going to go ahead. For those students who are not participating in athletics, that leads their child at risk of being exposed to someone who is. That being said, these kids are out and about. They're working. They are getting together on their own social agendas. So how much can we control? I just, we have worked so hard, you know, with everyone's help to keep the school open. The only reservation I have is it may cause us to have to, again, close different areas if we do have some exposure. We've gotten better with limiting the number of people when there's been an exposure or a confirmed case. So we've minimized the amount of students we have to put out of the building. But we have worked so hard to get where we are. But I think as Matt mentioned, the mental health piece is huge. I can't even imagine my son not being, having the sports to, with school, when he was in school. Yes, I just, some kids, that's what they, that's what school is about. So I'm with you, Mr. Marshall. I'm divided, but I'm also very supportive because Matt is going to do the right thing and I trust him.
That's. No, that's okay. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I'm going to call, we've had discussions on both sides. I think it's important that we bring this to a vote of the school committee. So I'd like to ask for a recommendation to approve the administration's decision to participate in the fall two season. David Hughes has moved it. Do I have a second? I will second. Okay, Don Foster has seconded. Do you want to do a?
We'll do a roll call.
Do a roll?
I'll go by town. Evelyn Boulet?
Yes.
Mo Saint-Aman?
Yes.
Justin Broder?
Yes.
John Williams?
Don on mute.
I don't see him here.
Maybe Don had to drop off from.
No, I see Don.
I see Don.
Don's muted.
You're muted, Don. What's your vote?
If yes, put your hand up.
Just thumbs up, thumbs down.
Your volume's not working. Give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down so I can see. There it is, thumbs up. Thanks, Don. Gary Mansfield?
Yes.
Don Foster?
Yes.
Bob Marshall?
Yes.
Shirley Burke?
Yes.
David Hughes?
Yes.
Sharon Cruz? You're on mute, Sharon.
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain? Nancy Souza?
Yes.
Dick Amash?
Yes.
So we have 11 yeses, one abstention.
Madam Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry, Matt, yes.
I just would like to take this opportunity to thank everybody for the confidence. And I can certainly attest to the fact that it will be some work, but it certainly will be worthwhile for our students. And I think bringing it back will certainly infuse the community of Old Colony. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your work, Matt.
Madam Chair, I think Don has.
I think it would be worthwhile repeating that we shouldn't overlook Nancy's suggestion, a very good suggestion to offer parity to other programs that are not necessarily sports-oriented, but are perhaps more intellectual in some ways or.
We have to do something for the non-athletes of this, of this school. And I think that recommendation was clear to Aaron. I don't know that we need to vote it, but we'll look at the next school committee meeting maybe to see what movement we could have.
We're already rolling out esports. We have a plan to roll out the esports this year.
Non-athletic, though.
Yep, and that's not necessarily athletic because it's gaming.
Well, it's gaming and it's team building as well.
And also we'll be, you know, we can look at the safe reinstitution of something perhaps drama-related. I know our GSA continues to meet remotely, so. Yep, maybe the robotics.
Clubs, we have clubs.
Yep, so we'll look at some of the clubs and we can find out how to safely implement. Thank you.
It was a point very well taken, Nancy.
Yeah, Shirley?
Yes, Bob?
To the other part of Nancy's point, she also indicated the need or the potential need, and I think she's right on the mark, of making sure that if we need to hire some more personnel, or I heard Deb say that she and I think the other nurse would be willing to offer their presence at some point. I think that's way above and beyond the call of duty. It certainly needs to be remunerated. And/or maybe we need to hire somebody to do the, some of the paperwork or whatever needs to be done to take some of this off of the coaches' backs.
Well, let's, Matt, do his job and figure out what his needs may be. And you can come back to us if there's any requirements.
Could I please thank Mrs. Lebec for being our front-line person?
Indeed. Thank you very much, Deb.
Every single day, and we appreciate you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
It's my pleasure.
Mike Pacho, whose lineup?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Just to address the issue of equity with the clubs, I think with the lessening of restrictions on the buses, that's going to be huge because the main drawback was we couldn't get kids on late buses and things like that with any kind of safety. So that's going to be huge. So that is one of the things we're looking at. Newsletter went out. Again, I have to give a special thank you to Marcia Davenport, who's filling in for my assistant, who's been out on maternity leave. There is a special, a separate piece that went out today that was omitted. Nothing, nothing her fault. That was all things that I received that I did not put in there or give to. That was all things that I received that I did not put in there or give to her, so. But I thought it was important to get all that information out there. Other than that, we are doing, having continued efforts to get kids involved. Just look at the, at the newsletter, the, you know, library's running a novel society. We're bringing back assemblies. OCTV is, is doing their episodes. Student, student council's doing a polar plunge, and we're also planning senior week with them this week. And then also, we're looking at the expansion of Area 476 to get more kids in the building that could be struggling academically or socially. We are having our second reflection day next Friday for grades 10 and 12, so we'll get some more input from those kids as to what they think is working and not working. We do have an MCAS update, we have dates, and we began the planning. Just so everyone knows, we're going to have to test three grades this year, grades nine, 10, and 11. Thank you to the state for that.
Good lord.
I also want to, I also want to publicly recognize Isabel Darcy for her winning of the Outstanding Locational Technical Award, and also Kayla Durant for winning the Walk as our nominee for the Walter Markham Award. And coincidentally, those are both CAD students, so congratulations to them. Other than that, I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Mike. You have a, I'm sorry, I jumped over the cybersecurity. Oh, I did that, but. Aaron, anything on this, the cybersecurity awareness training?
Sure, we, we enrolled the, the entire district in a cybersecurity awareness program through the state last year. We've concluded that program with 111 participants, which was 100, 100% participation by our group. The report card is shared with the school committee, and we had a excellent growth rate. We, we started at 79% with our scores, we finished at 88%. We did share this with the IT subcommittee as well, at which point Mr. Broder decided it would be okay to give us a hard time about our fishing rate being 2% over the state average, so. It's all right, you're on mute.
No, I know, just saying, you, you were the clicker, right?
Yeah, we, I, I was guilty. I forwarded an email to Kyle, and we think that might be a false positive. But all joking aside, we're very, we're very grateful for the opportunity. It was a free program. I think there are significant benefits that result from participation, and we will look to participate again this year in their maintenance program. So thank you to everybody who did such a stellar job in contributing, and we're grateful again for the opportunity.
You have a list? Yes, Bob.
I, I'm sitting here fuming at something that Mike just said about the MCAS test. I was really hoping that that wasn't going to take place, maybe after the meeting or tomorrow, whenever you get a chance, Aaron. Can you send me some information about who the hell I can talk to at the state on this issue? Because I don't know what they're thinking. This is not an intelligent move, in my opinion. Thank you very much.
You have a listing of our next meetings. We meet with town officials tomorrow. The next school committee meeting is March 17th. Make sure you agree. On the 24th, we have a hearing on the FY21 operating and maintenance budget. Is that subcommittee, budget subcommittee?
The hearing is usually.
That's, that's the whole, that's where we have the open, open meeting.
Our committee is the hearing.
Not on FY21. It says hearing on FY21 operating and maintenance.
That's an error, then. I should say FY22.
22.
Just an error.
So is this the public hearing for the?
It's a public hearing.
That's the public hearing, yep.
Sorry about that.
That's going to be forthcoming.
All right, so my calendar for the March 24th meeting as well. Is there anything else? I would remind, and I'm sure Jolene will be in touch with those people, terms should be expiring within the next month or two. If your term is up and you're interested in remaining on the school committee, you might want to give some consideration to contacting your town hall and town representatives. With no other, with no further business, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.